Oh, he wants an easel to be special.
On the golf course, we'll be okay today. Pantheon, we're at... We'll do, we'll get you in okay for the golf course. The Pantheon, we're at a meeting because we're at chain, either way, over here, for funding.
Yes, sir.
And we've been talking with, we've been, we've been talking about Nicole and she's, we're working with her on that. Because we want to, we're trying to make it, because of, you know, things for the county are different for us. Why is the clock off by five?
It's to throw you off. So it's not the claims, it's the clock.
Yeah, let's do it.
Call order, council meeting for October 25th. If everyone would stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, bless the decisions of this body, God us tonight and the future as well. Amen.
Can we have roll call?
Mr. Salters?
Yep.
Mr. Grove?
Here.
Mr. Gornell?
Uh, he's at a convention, I think.
Yes.
Stickers Convention, right?
Mr. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Ravellette?
Here.
Mr. McNeese?
Uh, he is absent this evening.
Mr. Stangle?
Here.
Mayor Yocum?
Here. Adoption of the agenda?
Uh, make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to adopt the agenda as presented.
Question.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
And by a vote of five to zero, the agenda is adopted. Need approval of the October 13th minutes?
Make a motion to approve the October 13th minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Question.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of five to zero, they are approved. Petitions, memorials, remonstrances. Being done, we'll go to committee chair report.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, we had a Veterans Committee meeting last Tuesday and we had a pretty good sized crowd. We had two ladies from the DAR, two city councilmen, and five ladies from VFW, one from Civitan. And we talked about some of the things we're going to be doing for veterans today. And we had approval of some thank you cards. We have them printed up. And also approval of flag stickers that we're going to disseminate to the students at Lincoln High School and hopefully other areas around town on that day.
All right, uh, for committee reports, we'll go back to budget and finance. We said we're going to hold until lit discussions, um, basically calm down a little bit to go over the funding request for the golf course and the Pantheon. With the Pantheon, we're actually working on some things with them. Uh, we're going to have a meeting next week for, with the special programs planning events here at 6:00 PM. Um, and we're really working on focusing on how does this benefit the city specifically? The Pantheon's got hands in everything. They've got things that help out the county. They've got things to help out the city and businesses and agriculture all over. So specifically, how do our funds go directly to help those small businesses, those entrepreneurs, those startups that we want to see and we've been talking about? And we've had some really good dialogue with Nicole. I know Brian's reached out and if you want to add anything to it. But I think we'll be able to get to a good place with that and be able to move forward with our focus being specifically on that small business aspect, that entrepreneurial aspect, that startup aspect that we are all excited about and we're committed to. Is there anything you want to add to that?
There's just ways that we can restrict the money that we designate to the Pantheon. That way we, we feel like it is better used in what we want it to be used for. Never opened for that.
Yeah, and I've also asked Kathy to meet as well so they can kind of go over and discuss things that are easy for us budgetarily and what works for us. Um, and the key thing is, it's not that we don't want to work with them, but it's making sure that we have a thing set up that we have a good partnership and we're specifically focusing on what we do and that's what we represent in the city. Uh, so we will have that meeting at six and then that will come back to us again, um, that following council meeting.
The sixth, you say the sixth of?
It'll be next, um, what we got? What's the next Monday? What's next week's Monday date?
The fourth?
First. Is that the first?
The fourth?
Yeah.
First.
Yeah, so we'll do the first.
Six o'clock here?
Yep. Yeah, and I would encourage you guys all to be here, um, if you can. All right, so then it comes to the golf course. The recommendation from, um, our committee was to, uh, fund the golf course at the, um, the five year amount. Was that right, correct? Five years?
Five thousand.
Yeah, the hundred twenty-five thousand and split that up into five year increments. Um, in discussing those things, that was the recommendation, that that be put on claims and that we pay for that. But like I said, we've got to discuss this as a council as a whole. Um, I know I've talked with Councilman Gornell, obviously he doesn't have a vote here tonight, and Councilman McNeese. They were both for this, uh, moving forward. I felt that this was a good investment. I know I was in discussions with the mayor of possibly having to buy this solo. Um, and that cost for us was very high. So to have a group come in and be able to do this and to be community focused, the key thing that I really enjoy, and kind of pull on my economics background a little bit here. The events that they're going to be able to bring in, we're in the low single digits in the events that they've been able to have. And their goal is to get back to the mid twenties, maybe even the high twenty of events and golf outings that they have. And it's not just those things, but think of like, I've talked with a lot of the nonprofits and the businesses that have events, that they're taking them out of town now. To be able to have a good resource where more people are involved, where you can have those type of events that, I mean, they raise money on those things to support a lot of things throughout the year for these nonprofits and organizations. Not to mention the restaurant activity and hotel activity that you will see because of having events here. So with that, I was very pleased with the numbers that I saw. I was very pleased with the discussions I had, not just with the group that's coming to buy it, but the other people, uh, specifically those that have actually moved events and want to move them back into our community. So, um, that's my two cents and now I'll let you guys go forward with any other discussion.
I do have, I do have a comment on that because, uh, this is not something that, uh, I prefer. So, uh, my vote on that will be, it will be a no, uh, for the following reasons. Um, I really do feel like, uh, those people have already come in. They've saved that area. And I do believe that, uh, this is an area, though I love the golf course and though I think of the world of those guys that are coming in that are doing that, I think that is great. Uh, but I do feel like this is a private, for-profit institution and, uh, that we should not, uh, be looking at giving money in that way to a capital project like that. Like I said, I am, I am for, I am for that. I am for them coming in and doing that. And they, they have essentially came in and their group of investors have saved that, so we're not saving it by any measure. Uh, we're just adding to it. Uh, so that's kind of my two cents there. Uh, I wish them the best of luck in their, their journey, uh, to, to do that, so.
All right, another discussion?
All right, do you want us to have a vote of support or against? That works for me. All right, so we've only got the ones that are here. Like I said, Councilman Gornell and Councilman McNeese are for this, but obviously they're not here and their votes will not count because they're not here. So I guess I just make a motion in, um, support of the funding for the golf course. Is that good enough, esteemed council?
Sorry, I want to move on.
So a motion was made?
I'll second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to approve the one hundred twenty-five thousand dollar funding for the golf course to be paid over five years. Any more discussion?
Anybody else?
No.
We could cover everything.
Mr. Lau?
No.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Okay, by a vote of four to one, that is approved. Any other committee reports? If not, report to city officers. And then we'll move to old business, uh, business updates.
All right, uh, we're actually getting to a good time for business updates. Um, all businesses that I'm talking to, you're starting to see that holiday uptick. Uh, starts with the pre-Halloween stuff, all the way through the Halloween season, and then you start with Thanksgiving, going to Christmas and the New Year. So we're really starting to see that uptick, which is what we need to see. Um, a lot of our businesses do make a large chunk of their money during this time period, which is great. But our businesses have been doing good throughout the year, so this is very positive. So hopefully they have a great holiday season, um, and obviously our big push is to support our local institutions because they do support us an awful lot.
Okay, county metrics update.
All right, so we just got our new numbers, uh, just a little bit ago, and they're actually really good. There were six cases over the weekend that were reported, uh, zero new cases today. And then our positivity rate is starting to drop. It started really uptick there for a while. Um, I know there were some concerns that we could possibly have gone red, but we're solid orange and we seem to be, that seems to be the sweet spot right now is we're just at orange. Uh, but the positivity did drop, I think, two percent, um, Friday to today, uh, which keeps us in solid orange, which I would assume to, when we come to Wednesday, when we have the update, we'll be in orange again, so. Um, but we are seeing some positive things. We're like your daily cases. You're not seeing those jumps as much where we would see like a fifty or seventy. Um, you're just seeing kind of the twenties, the thirties, and I think, uh, for our health department, it was reported, you're seeing an average of twenty to twenty-five a day. Uh, but with the, some of these new numbers over the weekend and a zero today, that's, we've got to drop that number a little bit lower, which is something that we want to see, so. Um, and in the school cases, I know for a fact in our school cases, we're in single digits for the first time all school year of active cases. So that's really good for us when it comes to school stuff. So other than that, uh, we're, while we're still orange, there are some positives to see here, so. That's your update when we talk to county metrics today.
Okay, we'll move to new business. First up is ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one, which is the twenty-twenty-two salary ordinance.
Uh, make a motion to approve ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to, uh, read and approve ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one.
Ordinance number sixteen twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Innsan setting the maximum annual compensation amounts effective January one, twenty-twenty-two for employees and elected officials.
Discussion?
All right, these are things that we've already approved. We've already gone over, um, and we need to make sure that we pass these tonight because we do have a time limit, which is the start of November, and we don't meet again till...
Correct, it has to pass by the end of the month.
Yeah, so we've got to make sure that this does pass in three readings tonight, but we have discussed this. We have gone over this numerous times. We know what they are.
We already voted on it in the budget.
Yeah, so we've already voted on it once, but now let's get this done, so.
Question?
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of five to zero, first reading of ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one passes.
Uh, make a motion for second reading of ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second that.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to have second reading of ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one.
Ordinance number sixteen twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Innsan setting the maximum annual compensation amounts effective January one, twenty-twenty-two for the next calendar year.
Discussion?
Question?
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
And by a vote of five to zero, second reading of six, ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one passes. Need a motion to suspend...
Suspend the rules. Make a motion to suspend the rules so we can have the third reading of ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to suspend the rules to have third reading of ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one. Just need a vote on that.
You have to vote on the, uh, motion to suspend.
Yes.
Yeah, because I've tried to do it before, and you've shut me down every time.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of five to zero, we will suspend the rules. Now I need a motion for third and final reading.
Yeah, I will make a motion for the third and final reading of ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to have third and final reading of ordinance sixteen twenty-twenty-one.
Ordinance number sixteen twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Innsan setting the maximum annual compensation amounts effective January one, twenty-twenty-two.
Discussion?
Question?
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes. And by a vote of five to zero, third and final reading of ordinance sixteen twenty-one passes. Next up is Kirk Bushy, water tower project. And I mentioned this your last meeting, that it would be here to start the process of issuing bonds.
Good evening. Um, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, I just wanted to give you a brief, uh, overview of the project that the utility services board approved, uh, last week at their regular meeting. And as you all know, uh, there's two things that the utility services board cannot do. One is to, uh, borrow money and the other one is to raise rates. That is left to the, uh, authority of the city council. So, uh, I'm here to talk about, and I, I've summarized it here on this one page, this blue sheet you have in front of you, twenty-twenty-two drinking water infrastructure improvement project that we, uh, are looking to embark on. And I'll talk about just the features of the project first. We're, we're talking about, uh, adding a two million gallon storage tank, water tower, uh, on Hart Street at Bauer Drive. We have had discussions with Greg Parsley and the school board, uh, initially, uh, very preliminarily, but they are, uh, favorable toward working with us on the property that is located, uh, it would be on the corner of Bauer Drive and Hart Street on the high school property, uh, there in that corner. So there's currently no, nothing, that property is not used for anything other than just mowing the grass. So, um, that's where it would be located. Uh, we, the other parts of this, uh, project includes a water main connection from Bauer, on Bauer Drive from Hart Street to Main Street. We have two water mains out there, one going out Hart Street, one going out Main Street, but they're not connected. And with this water tower in that vicinity, those need to be connected. They, that water main would be on the diocese of Evansville, uh, side of Bauer Drive. Uh, a third part of the project is a Monte Road and Thompson Road water main extension that connects two points within our system to improve, uh, water quality and pressure in the, uh, outlying area, out in the, near the Ridgeview subdivision. Uh, Monte Road is the road that extends Hillcrest. It's the extension of Hillcrest Road when you get over Old Highway Fifty going toward New Highway Fifty. So, uh, right now we have inadequate water mains in that area. Uh, and then the last part, oh, and there's also some provision to do some replumbing within the Ridgeview subdivision. The, uh, water system that's in there is deficient and not capable of handling fire hydrants and so forth that we need out in that area. So, um, the last part of the project is the Main Street Phase Two water main relocation. Uh, we're moving the water main from, I guess would be the, uh, the north side of the road over to the south side, if you want to call it north and south out there, uh, for Phase Two. So the rationale for doing this, uh, we have a, uh, there's pretty much a rule of thumb within the water industry, municipal water industry, that you need to have, uh, about two days usage in storage in your tanks. Uh, currently, we only have about five point five million gallons stored in the four tanks that we have. So this two million would get us closer to the eight million that we really need because our average daily usage runs between three and a half and four and a half million gallons a day. So that's one box that this checks. Another box that this would check is this will help us provide consistent pressure, improved water quality, and most importantly, redundancy in our outer pressure zone. You all may remember the little incident that we had this spring, uh, out in, on the east side of town and northern side of town when we took the Foxridge tank out of, offline for maintenance. Uh, we only have one tank in that pressure zone. The other three tanks are in a different pressure zone, and that's what kind of led to that, that issue. This would eliminate that. A lot of talk about future housing. You all participated, I think, uh, financially in the housing study that KCDC and others have, have been working on. Uh, and, uh, many of the areas that were identified, uh, as potential additional housing areas are in the area that is going to be served by this tank and the Foxridge tank. Uh, the timing is good for our department, therefore it's good for our city. Uh, it is, uh, we have, uh, debt service rolling off, uh, from the, uh, the SRF loan that was borrowed back in two thousand and three to put the tank out at the Armory. And this tank, by the way, would be pretty much a, a blueprint of the tank that's at the Armory. Uh, so with that, um, we're basically just replacing debt service so it doesn't add additional burden to the utility from a cash standpoint. Uh, the last item I had under project rationale is it's, uh, the, this investment can be used as match, uh, for the ready grant process. And I'm not an expert on that process, but I'm told that this, this will be helpful to that, to that project. From a financing standpoint, uh, and that's really why I'm here, other than just to let you know what we're doing, um, we're asking to approve a seven point two million dollar bond issue that would be over twenty years at a rate somewhere between two and three percent, depending on the day the bonds are sold. Uh, we would also be using, uh, based on conversations with the mayor and, and, uh, uh, President Salters earlier, uh, when we were looking at this project, uh, one point five million dollars in the Recovery Act funds that you all have received or will be receiving for a total project of eight point seven million dollars. As I noted, the bond debt service replaces what we have rolling off. Uh, so there's no additional burden on the, uh, the cash flow, which leads to probably one of the most notable, uh, features of this project. There will be no customer rate increase as a result of these improvements. Normally, when I come to you, or when the department would come to you with a project and asking for a bond ordinance approval, giving us the authority to borrow the money, we would also have a companion ordinance with it, which says, okay, here's the rate ordinance that's going to support this bond ordinance. There's no need to do a rate ordinance in this particular case because we're not asking for any kind of change in our rates. Uh, the next steps would be, uh, the bond ordinance first reading. Uh, Ice Miller and Crowe will be our consultants. And our bond counsel, uh, first reading on Monday, November eighth, if that fits your all's, uh, calendar. And then, uh, we'd have to have second, third reading, that following city council meeting, hopefully. And then the bond sale would happen late November, early December. Uh, and we would look to bid all of these projects. It probably won't be in just one, one bid. It'll be a several, uh, broken down, but, uh, the bids would be in the first quarter of twenty-two. Probably take at least a year to eighteen months to complete all of this. Obviously, Phase Two of the, uh, uh, Main Street project will be probably the first thing that gets completed, assuming everything goes well with the city's acquisition of Right Away. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. I've tried, tried to summarize this as best I could in a brief overview for you.
Kirk, I appreciate you explaining that. You always give us really good details on everything. Um, and while this is a drinking water infrastructure plan, to me it's just as much as a housing and commercial development plan as well, because if we don't have that there, we're not going to be able to expand in those areas where that's prime real estate for housing and commercial development. So this is vitally important to that. Those two things are hand in hand when it comes to that area, so this is a no-brainer.
I will say one thing I didn't mention, uh, as you all know, uh, our utility serves a, a greater area than just the citizens of Innsans that, uh, uh, and, uh, in, in, in Knox County, we estimate that we serve probably thirty thousand residents, of which a little over half of those would be city residents. So this infrastructure, in a large part, serves a, a, a much bigger area than just the city of Innsans as it currently sits today. Knox County Water will benefit from this South Knox High School. There's a lot of, a lot of areas around Knox County that benefit from this, this project.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Are you wanting to use some of your ARPA dollars for this project? Because we would accept it.
Let me guess, you got a question about Ridgeview?
Yes, it is a question about Ridgeview. It was paved three, maybe four years ago. When we go into that area, will you be repaving that?
We'll fix anything that we tear up, but...
With like material, not concrete material?
Whatever's there now, usually unless there's a better, I mean, we, we usually work with the homeowners and, and people, you know, if we tear up the driveway and it's concrete, we put concrete back if that's what they want.
I, I was talking about the roadway itself, the actual road, because we just repaved that three, maybe four years ago, so that's actually very new pavement.
It, within the Ridgeview subdivision?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Well, anything we tear up, we'll put back the way it was, yeah, or better. Yeah, we, we won't leave, we don't leave any project, I don't think. We, we, our goal is not to leave anything worse, pardon?
That's just one of the areas that we, we can actually have a little early, not, I just want to make sure that those roads are put back together.
Yes, they will.
If you're asking if we're going to repave all that, no, probably not.
Not asking to be repaved.
Well, it doesn't sound like it needs to be repaved. He's just concerned if we tear some, you know, if we have to cross one of his newly paved streets, we'll put it back, you know, like it was.
That's, that's what our concern would be.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, that's what you do with every project that we do.
Yes, yes.
Our utilities, to make sure that we get specific on that.
Yeah, I don't have anything to do with gas or electrics, not us. Any other questions?
I would say that, he wants to...
Mr. Bushy, as, as you look at this, does this, this is just, you know, if you look at our housing study, does this, when you're looking at doing this, does this kind of, as we look at including and growth, um, are we looking at doing something similar to like this in so many odd years again? Or is this, I mean, is this, is this big enough to handle what we're doing now? Or do we need to, to look at more future expansion here?
You know, it's hard to predict the, the future, but, um, you know, from, from, uh, I don't know, sometime, well, it was nineteen fifty, actually. From nineteen fifty to, I don't know, the, the eighties, nineties, we had one water tower in this whole town, the one at VU. Uh, so, uh, now we've got, we've got four. Thank God we put the one out at, uh, uh, the Armory when we did because of the industrial park. Uh, it serves the industrial park very well. Obviously, we have a large customer out there that, that that tank came in really handy for. But I can't answer, you know, will there be a day that, that a sixth Innsan's water tower would have to be put in? I, I, I don't see that today. But, um, who knows? I don't see that today, but who knows about the future.
Any other questions?
Thanks Kirk.
Thank you Kirk.
Thank you.
Next is redistrict.
We're just having a night, aren't we? Alright, so I've invited Commissioner Brink and County Clerk David Shelton come here. I want to thank David for the work that he's put in on this. He's made it a lot easier for TJ and I as we look at what's going on now for the process to redistrict, re precinct. Remember that starts at the commissioner level, alright? The commissioners are the ones that initiate that process and go forward with it. And then we approve the plan that they lay forward. I want to thank Commissioner Brink for taking a pause on that. He wanted to get our input and make sure that we knew what was going on when it came to redistricting, specifically in the city of Vincennes. We were able to meet a couple of times. I know Councilman Ravellette has seen the maps a couple of times. Councilman Grove has seen the maps a couple of times. I've shared them with you, so you've been able to see them. And we think we've got something that'll be good for us. They'll explain timelines and how this works. But when you're looking at the city of Vincennes, technically we really didn't need to do anything because we were under the deviation. But we don't do anything during this time period. We end up with a situation like we had 10 years ago where we really had to make some changes because we ignored that for decades. So we did a heavy lifting 10 years ago. What we're going to see now, the changes are minimal. So I'll turn it over to you two as we move forward.
Yeah, I'll start. Thank you very much. And first of all, I want to thank Mr. Shelton and everybody that's worked hard on this. He'll go through some of the names that's been really involved in this and also Mr. Chatten, who's here tonight as well from the county council. As, as you said, 10 years ago, when the city council, I was, I was privileged enough to be on the city council at that point in time and we did redistrict. And we had to change quite a bit. We were so far out of compliance. Well, here it is 10 years later and we're looking at the county. And when this first came in, Dave said, boy, do you know how far you guys are off? And I was like, I hate to ask. And we were something 37 percentile or something to that, which we were way out of line. So we had to really come together and put this thing together. Our timeframe at the time was very short. It was short because, no fault to anybody, but because of Corona and the virus and last year and the census getting out late, coming in late, everything was pushed back. So when we found out they were going to give us a little bit of extra time instead of the October 15th deadline, we were able to push pause. Dave and his folks went back and put together an even better map than what they had before. The timeframe's really worked out well. What we want to do today is talk to you folks a little bit about what the city and Mr. Salters, Mr. Ravellette and some others have been involved in those conversations, what the city maps will look like. And we really want your feedback. We want your opinions first before we move forward. I don't like the state doing unfunded mandates. And so therefore we will never do an unfunded made, or any kind of mandate to you folks without your consultant, your, your opinions on it. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave and I'm going to let him talk a little bit about where they're at, what, what's changes. And really with the city, there were very minimal changes involved, very minimal. And some of the things that he was able to do with those maps. And so I'll turn it over to Dave.
Good evening. I want to briefly start by just answering the basic question, why do we have to redistrict for the audience? It's all about the basing foundation of our nation, our form of government, equal representation. So that on a local level falls down to city councils and county councils. This equal representation is based upon census data that's completed every 10 years. And you're supposed to have a, as equal deviation population wise between districts as you possibly can. There's no set number, nothing set in stone or in statute. Rule of thumb, you try to keep it under 10% deviation. Even though the city did redistrict back in 13, at the time, I don't remember what the exact numbers here, 3, 3 to 4% deviation at that time, just due to population shifts, the, the population deviation in the city of Vincennes is currently at 36%. The county stands at 34.76%. I can't find where the county redistricted in the last 40 years plus, and that's about as far back as I could go. To figure out what your deviation is, first you have to, you know, get your census data, merge that with GIS mapping software into your city council districts and just do the math. You add up the, the population of the precincts that are associated with each one of your districts. The math formula is you take the highest, well, first you take your total population, 16, 759, I believe is the current population of Vincennes. You take that number divided by five. That gives you your target population per city council district. You then take the highest population district, subtract the number from the lowest population district, divide the remainder by your average and then multiply that by 100 to get to the decimal point in the right place. And that tells you what your population deviation is. You're familiar with this map here? This is your current districts? Right here, so you all know this map right here? Still see it? Okay, perfect. So that's the current map right there. Just turn around so they all can see it. This is the proposed district map right here. Now also, it's a little unique situation. We're going to vote centers next year. Vote centers, just to recap, is where you're not restricted to vote at your home precinct. You're free to vote anywhere in the county where we have a voting location. We'll have 13 available throughout the county on Election Day. We'll have three locations available the two Saturdays before Election Day. And then we'll have the month of early voting at the Sallyport per the normal there. So in the age of vote centers, your precincts are becoming obsolete. They're not really relevant except when it comes to office vacancies, ballot vacancies, so forth and so on. So also, and I've conversed with both the party chairs in the county, both Republicans and Democrats have difficulty finding precinct chairs. There's probably two thirds of the Democrat chairs are open and we always have five or six on the Republican side that are, you know, we just can't find precinct chairs. But like I said, they're kind of getting obsolete anyway. So this is a map that I drew here. And we tried to do nesting similar to what you guys did, you know, 10 years ago with the county council districts kind of matching the same boundaries and borders. Ideally, we would have gone down to five precincts for the city of Vincennes. One precinct equals your district for your district members there. However, with the populations where they, they laid out there, I couldn't translate that to the county council districts. So what this proposal has is six precincts for the city of Vincennes. Precincts one and two, your district will become precinct one, which is district one. When we get to district two, they're going to have two precincts because I had to split that district on the county council level. And I know this is all confusing, so I'll try to keep it as simple as possible. And then the rest of them are single precinct districts. On the map, the previous map, we had a couple, call them dog ears or pan handles here, here. See them there? We've eliminated those in the new one. The process that I took was I took your highest population district, which was district five, and I whittled that down as close to the target population, which would be 3,351. And again, that's based on census data. And then I just kind of worked my way around. Your district, Mr. Grove, was the least populated, even more so this year because we didn't have very many BU students here to fill out census data and everything. So your territory grew the greatest, but this map here with the deviation, I have you at 1.28% deviation. The only, you know, the change, biggest change basically happened in the center of the city right there. We've got a little tooth or whatever. That's based on census blocks. Those, that's how the census data comes, that every map has blocks. They can be a square city block or it could be a 25 acre plot out in the county. There's no rhyme and reason to the way they do it. And like the top block here had 37 people in it and this one had 19. You wouldn't think that would affect your deviation that much, but when you're only talking 3,351 per district, that threw off the numbers enough to, to warrant that little tooth sticking out right there. But again, we're going to vote centers, so there shouldn't be any confusion to the voters. I did not nail down the exact number, but in the city of Vincennes, I'm going to say there's about 800 people that's actually switching from one district to the next. So the impact's very minimal with vote centers. Again, no confusion on where to vote. You just show up at one of the four voting locations in Vincennes or anywhere else in the county.
The key thing, you said 800 people, that doesn't mean like active voters. That's just population.
I think that's probably what I meant is 800 active voters.
Yeah, because when we get to that, because we've got to base it off population, not active voters. You base the precincts off of active voters.
Precincts are based on population. Precincts are based on active voters, not roster voters.
That gets to be the fun math.
Yes. So I'm going to leave these maps with you guys. If you want to display them.
Kathy, you have those in your office also.
These, that is the one from my office.
Okay.
Alright, so.
So the public can come.
So the public can come in, take a look at it. So the plan is, and I'm grateful that, you know, Commissioner Brink and the commissioners and obviously the county council, we're all working together on this because we want the most equitable maps. And these will be probably the most equitable maps we've seen here in Vincennes and Knox County. A deviation of 1.28% is very impressive.
And we didn't carve any current county or city council members out of their district either.
And, and when you look at it, like the changes are minimal. And they're really easy to see. When you look at District 1, it's basically two streets, two to three streets down. And then you take out the dog ears from three, the dog ear from four, and there's a chunk of District 5 that went into four. So when you look at those things, it's really easy to explain. The biggest issue that we had 10 years ago and those that were on council, Commissioner Brink, the biggest issue we had were people not knowing where to go vote. The nice thing about this is because we're doing the voting centers at the same time, we won't have that issue because your information will already be loaded into the system. Simple, easy, quick, which makes it easier for everybody across the board. The only thing that we've got to remind people on clearly is here are the voting centers and these are the areas that you can go vote in Knox County. I do want to thank you for the work that you put into this. You've shown me five or six different versions of these map.
I think we ended up having seven different variations.
Yeah, and they were, and all of them were good and they got better each time. And getting it closer to that lower number of deviation is what we wanted to see because you want everybody represented equally. And that's what we wanted to see here in Vincennes. So I thank you for that and I thank you for Commissioner Brink for waiting for us. Now, the key thing that we have to remember moving forward is once they start the process, there can be no changes made. So they've come to us to kind of get, I would say, basically a gentleman's agreement here that we're okay with this. And then what would happen is in the new year, we would vote this through. But that gives us time for us to put these maps out and we'll leave them in the clerk treasurer's office so people can come and take a look at these and have their input in there. The nice thing about, like I've said before, for the city of Vincennes, these changes are very small, very minor, and they're easy to explain. When you get to the difficulty that we had 10 years ago, I mean, man, it was, it was tough.
10 years ago, Mr. Salters and I sat with colored pencils and a map, census block map, on my dining room table to draw this out with a calculator. It was a lot of fun. Times have changed quite a bit.
Just a tad.
Just a little. When we walk out of here, what we would like to have is that gentleman's agreement that we will be doing this at our first meeting next month, which is the second, I believe, November 2nd is the commissioner's first meeting of the month. And we will be setting these maps. So when, when we, when we set those maps, please understand they're going to be set. And that's really what I, I wanted to work with you guys on to make sure that everybody's on the same page with this. Like I said, Mr. Shelton and his crew did a fabulous job and it seemed like every map got a little bit better, a little bit better. And those couple of weeks that the federal government and the state government gave us to work with this even more was, was wonderful. And, and these maps really have turned out wonderful. Very limited movement as far as districts go for you folks as well as county council side, but enough to make that change from 30% down to 1.28, which is really great. 1.28 is about as good as you're going to get.
And the nice thing about this too is we're all working together on this to make the best maps. I remember last time we had some difficulties with some county officials trying to make sure that we get the, they didn't really care. Just do whatever you want. That doesn't help both sides. We all have to be on the same page when we do this because it makes it better. And allows us to get to that lower deviation number, so.
Great.
And as far as when you redistrict yourself, the state has not established a deadline. I can just tell you that January 2nd is the first day that you could, you know, certify that as your district. But there's no real hurry at this time. As soon as I'm aware of a deadline, I'll let you know.
Well, the nice thing too is we're going to be able to leave these up and people are going to be able to see them. And that's the important thing for us. So does anyone else have any comments? Because I know that we put a lot of time into this and with the changes being so minimal and with us going to voting, like this is going to be an easy thing for us to be able to explain, which was key for me. Like it had to be something that is easily explainable, easily understandable. And we're there. We are there. So, and the changes are minimal. We're talking 800 citizens total out of, you know, 16,000 plus. And out of that, we don't have a set number of how many of those are really active voters. But compared to where we were, we were talking close to, you know, a couple thousand last time. Yeah, it was, it was a big number. So this is, this process has been a lot easier. This process has been a lot better and we've got more equitable maps because of that. So any councilmen have anything to say? Hey, we're good with it.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you very much, guys.
We will move on to claims.
Make a motion to pay claims in the amount of $516,570.08.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salters, sent by Vice President Grove to pay claims in an amount of $516,570.08. Any discussion on claims?
There, there's a Pantheon claim in here that I would like our clerk treasurer to be able to explain for us because it has to do with the EDA grant.
Correct. On page six of our claims, it does show a Pantheon payment on there of $48,000. The payment for that does come from the Pantheon funds, but it has to come through the city council because the EDA grant is with the city of Vincennes. So the approval for any claims has to come through us, even though the funds aren't technically city funds. It's Pantheon funds, but the grant is with us.
And if you remember, the match was made by Knox County, Indiana Development Corporation.
Yes.
That is not city dollars.
The key thing is that grant is in our name.
Exactly.
Because we got a. We got a better percentage coming through us.
Correct.
So that's why they came through us.
Question?
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes. And by a vote of five to zero, claims are paid. Anything of the miscellaneouss?
Just be ready. And we got some county officials here. I've reached out to the Salvation Army to get ready for the bell bash again. Should be a lot of fun. We're probably looking at those Fridays in December. Usually we've been doing it in the mid of December is when we typically do it. So they're going to get some dates for us when Walmart approves the dates. And then I will be sending them to you all in the county and us here as we get ready to avenge the bell and bring, and bring her, and bring her back safely where she belongs, here.
She looks good before.
And apparently it's bedazzled now.
It is bedazzled.
I don't know if I'm very pleased with that.
Boo.
Alright, so let's work out the miscellaneouss.
Move to public comment. Anybody want to speak public comment? If not, I'll move just for the good of the order.
Alright, for good of the order, we're too short today. Devastating. Alright, let's go to District 1. Now I got to try to remember which district we got that are here. So District 1, what do we got?
I don't think we had any events in District 1. I know what is going on. Well, the Halloween bash for the food trucks has been moved to Tuesday instead of tonight because of weather, although there's still some food trucks down there. The Richters are opening another, are opening another business on Main Street. It's the, I think it's called the Little's or something like that. But it sells to baby items and clothing and stuff like that. So slow down when you get to Pearl and Chrome, just before Pearl and Chrome, there's another shop opening up. So that's exciting, another building filled up on Main Street. And of course, paving's still happening on Fifth Street, so that's awesome. They've got all the curbs cut. They, the concrete is in on most of them and I think now probably start paving.
About two weeks.
Okay, okay. Alright, thank you. District 2 not here. District 3, Councilman Stangle.
District 3, the Town Suites by Marriott, they've got new owners. I don't know their names yet and much information about them, but maybe I'll have it next city council meeting. And also, looks like somebody may have moved into the vacant building, the 10th and, 10th and Main. Been a lot of work going on in there. Haven't talked to anybody yet that can tell me anything what's going on, but they got all the windows blocked up where you can't see in, so maybe it might be a little secretive, I don't know. But anyway, looking forward to see what they do with those businesses and buildings. Thank you.
Alright, Councilman Ravellette, District 4.
Yeah, looking forward to this Friday night, the 32nd Annual Halloween Safe Stop.
32nd?
32nd, I can't believe. Thirty-second. I can't believe it's been that many years. But, anyway, I want to thank Chief Helmbrand and his group for volunteering to be out there that night to help control traffic. Going to have Knox County Police as well, and the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department. They're all chipping in to make it another successful event. Thousands of children and their parents are expected to be out there Friday night to get safe treats. So, we want to thank them for all their cooperation, and keep it safe and have a happy Halloween.
Alright. Councilman Lau?
Alright, I guess mine is just really in regards to reminders that we are dark in the morning and we're dark in the evening. So, as many of you know, you go to work in the dark and you come home in the dark. But, that also means that our students are out in the dark. They're out in the mornings and they're out in the evenings. So, just be careful, even as we go into Halloween, you've got a lot of people, a lot of little people dashing back and forth. And remember, just remember back when you were a kid and how excited you were. Just take the opportunity, slow down, and watch out for all of our, all of our residents.
Alrighty. Alright, mine is going to be back on trick or treat. We obviously have the Safe Stop, but not only do we have the Safe Stop happening on Friday, but we've got the combo event of Main Street and Hart Street happening at the same time. It's going to be awesome. So, you've got Hart Street happening five to seven, Main Street happening four to seven. And this is going to be, it's going to be a lot of kids. If you've not been to the Safe Stop on Hart Street, I think thousands is an understatement. I mean, there are a lot of kids that are out there.
A lot of kids.
And we kind of, that's Friday, kind of kicks off a great Halloween weekend, where we have trick or treating, then Saturday, five to eight, and Sunday, five to eight. So, you know, it's going to be a fun weekend. This was one of the first, like, big things like last year, we were able to kind of do as a community, if you remember, and it kind of kicked off those things. And it was really exciting, and I know the kids are excited to be able to go out. I mean, we're talking about costumes at schools on Friday. It's going to be fun. So, trick or treat's back, and to kind of emphasize on what Councilman Lau said, just Friday, Saturday, Sunday, be a really good idea to make sure we're driving a little bit slower, because there will be a lot of kids out and about in the community enjoying the trick or treating festivities. Alrighty. Mayor?
Few things here. First up, Parks Department, they are finally getting the new roof put on the closed shelter house. I know we approved this, these dollars several years ago. It is now getting completed. Street Department, kudos to them. They've got the Christmas lights up on Main Street, even though they are not lit and will not be lit before Halloween. But, another good reason to have those up this early is that downtown will start their holiday open houses on the fourth, Thursday, the fourth of November, which is, you know, we're only a little over a week away from that. So, you'll see the Christmas lights lit up here pretty soon. And again, I want to thank the Street Department for getting those put up. And probably the biggest thing I have to say is, I am working on another voluntary annexation, which is about a hundred and eleven acres. It is the Vic Klein and his wife's property. I'm already in discussions with our accountants and working with attorneys to get this process moving and get it completed in a timely manner like we did the Dell property.
Good, 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 good.
Okay. If nothing else, just an motion to adjourn.
Same with...
We are adjourned.
Remember to sign this off.
Fifty-two. Alright.
So, I'm the county... I went to the market on Saturday and picked up supplies downtown. So, I was really excited. I was like, gathering what I can, you know? That's exactly...well, that, and they've got...oh, I love the wall of...